Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting into order. If it's 6:01, if I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Parrotte. Councilmember Alonso.
Present.
Councilmember Romero.
Present.
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Here.
Mayor Melendez.
And I am here. All right, we'll move on to the announcement of the closed session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I should first inquire whether or not we have any requests to speak on closed session items. Kimberly?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay, then it would be appropriate to recess in the closed session for items one through five, as listed on the agenda.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on into closed session. It is 6:02. As soon as we discuss the items, we'll be right back. Thank you.
You're famous.
I am. You have a good side, too.
I don't want to update it, though. We're not going to be able to. I think I still have, in order to log into the top line. I'm using an old password. That's a correct one. Oh, wow. I'll take it tomorrow. Like, I'm going to know that.
He's in recovery. Everything the doctor's been on the power is. I was like, oh, this is crazy. I was just thinking. I have a thing for qualification. They keep it.
What's that?
Good evening, everyone. Apologies for the delay. We're back from closed session. It is 7:22. I'll turn it over to our city attorney to provide a report on the closed session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The record should reflect that the city council convened into closed session that prior to convening all the five items that were listed on the agenda were mentioned and announced to be included in closed session. And the following is my report. Under conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, the consideration of initiation of litigation to matters. On that item, the city council received a briefing. It should be noted that one of those two matters, the mayor recused himself from participating. On those two matters, the city council provided direction to the city manager and city attorney's office. There was no action that is required to be reported from closed session at this time. Item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation was not discussed. We'll bring that back at the next meeting. The item three, threat to public services or facilities, that item was discussed with the chief of police. There was no action that is required to be reported at this time. Item four, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the Vision versus City of Montebello matter. On that item, the city council provided direction with respect to possible settlement authority on that item, and that was unanimous direction from the city council. Item number five, conference of labor negotiators. Again, the city council received a briefing from the agency's negotiator regarding these various employee groups. There was no action taken in closed session. There's items for consideration, open session later on in the agenda. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report from closed session. It is appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you, city attorney. At this time, I'll ask our city treasurer to lead us in the invocation, and I'll ask our police chief to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We can all please rise.
What would you do in the pledge?
I need the vocation. Lord, we are meeting here today to conduct the matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right through, and speech in part of your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Before we continue with our agenda, as some of you might know, over the weekend, we had our city clerk who had an emergency medical procedure. He is doing well. We have his brother here, Commissioner Jimenez, and he's recovering. I know it's touched many of us, and we are wishing him a speedy recovery. I think anybody who knows Chris knows that he gets along with everybody, and he is an instrumental part to the city of Montebello, so we do want to wish him a speedy recovery where he's in our thoughts. I know we've been checking in with you all over a lot, so just I would like to ask the community to keep him in your thoughts, prayers, and Chris, hopefully you're not watching the council meeting right now and you're getting some rest, but you know, just know that we're thinking about you and that we, again, we wish you the best and a speedy recovery. At this time, I'll move on to the corrections to the agenda. City manager?
Yes, Mayor. We do want to add one presentation regarding Athens, if you would allow us to do so.
Do we need direction consensus?
No, I think we're good.
We're good?
Yeah.
All right, we'll add on the Athens presentation to the presentation, the ceremonial portion of the agenda. So we'll begin first with the first item, which is a proclamation for National Wellness Month. This August, the city of Montebello is proud to recognize National Wellness Month and encourage everyone to embrace healthy lifestyle habits. While it may seem like a simple concept, self-care is easy to ignore, especially when life gets busy and stressful. Now more than ever, we encourage everyone to choose wellness and make small, meaningful changes to support your physical, mental, and emotional health. National Wellness Month is all about prioritizing self-care, managing stress, and building healthy routines. These habits can take many forms, and even the smallest steps can make a big difference. Some simple ways to take charge of your health and make National Wellness Month a priority include thirty minutes of exercise, disconnecting from social media, and spending time outdoors. Maybe take a stroll through Taylor Ranch Park, get active with a game of tennis or basketball at Montebello City Park, or stop by the Montebello Barnyard Zoo at Grant Ray to pet the animals and reduce the stress. To learn more about National Wellness Month and what you can do, visit our website at www montebello.ca.gov.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I do just want to, I think, talking about national wellness and the importance of this, just because I did see someone in the crowd here, I do just want to give a shout out to Blanca, who's a local Montebello resident who actually started Montebello's walking club. And so, in light of National Wellness Month, just want to thank her for the initiative to do this in our community. The past two weeks, folks from all across Montebello have come out to dedicate some time to their wellness and the importance of sharing this with their family as well. So just a quick shout out right there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member, and it's been great to see the group grow, and it's been great to see many, there's different running groups and walking groups and see our community so active. So thank you for acknowledging that. We'll move on to our city treasurer's quarterly report, and then after that, we'll do the Athens presentation. So we'll move with item number seven, the city treasurer's quarterly report. Is that by Mr. Matan? Yes, whatever you prefer.
Okay, here we go. All right, June 2025, monthly treasurer's report. Where do I point that to? Okay. Ah, there we go. All right, we got cash by major accounts comparison at two points in time, illustrates cash flow during the year. We have, if you look at the total available cash in June 2024, it's a 105.9 million. Then in June in 2025, it's 91 million point two. Change from last year is negative 14 million point seven. That is a combination of higher expenditures for capital projects unless cash received. However, we are on a solid basis, cash basis. Okay, and the next slide is the available investment cash balance increase annually in the last ten years. Steady growth, city has a healthy cash fund. Basically, that's all. Let me take over to my notes here. These are investments in cash, bank accounts, and investments with the state treasury. We do have a healthy cash balance there. There is sufficient liquidity to meet the demands for six months. The city cash flow position remains strong. And that is my report and for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. I'll look to see if my colleagues have any questions, comments. I'll start off with council member Peralta.
First off, just want to thank you so much for the report. This question is more towards our director. I know that in the last, one of the last reports that was given, the 14.7, negative point 14.7 million was, I think, a number that folks took as the city being in deficit or that, you know, we were basically not meeting or coming to meet the revenue that we were receiving. I just wanted to re-clarify that, I think, just for purposes of information and misinformation is that this is due to capital improvement projects that are either grant funded or prop funded. Once we complete and use the, or basically pay for those projects, we then receive a refund with that funding coming back to the city. So by the end of the fiscal year, that 14.7 million will basically like equal out. Is that my understanding?
Council member, yes, that is correct. Is with grant funded projects, we spend the cash upfront, and then we eventually get it back, sometimes as long as a year later. So there is a lag. And then also on top of that, there's some fund balance with some of our metro funds that we can dip into because we've saved it over the years that we can spend as well upfront. Hence that difference between expenditures and revenue.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any questions, comments? Okay. Sina? Did you? Sure. Well, do we get a card?
Well, not for this because it was a, what'd you ask if anybody had a question back week?
The council.
Yeah, council questions, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to the Athens presentation. Thank you again for the report.
Yeah, next presentation is going to be regarding Athens services. It's going to be done by Mr. Jeff Camera, who's our consultant overseeing our trash services.
Great, thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you very much. The purpose of today is just to provide you a very brief overview of the rollout and what has happened since we rolled that out. Athens has also presented an additional rollout of what the blue cart service was and what the green. And this purpose is to just go over a few basic points to where we stand from now with some of the supplemental rollouts. Identification, communication, the process, property overview and monitoring. These are the five things I'm going to cover very quickly. The identification, part of the process was identifying after the initial core cart service for the Montebello residents. There were several residents, about 1,500 customers, that had extra green cart service, and about 3,000 had a black cart service. These, while they were not covered under the base core charge for residential, these nonetheless were customers that Athens had identified as having extra carts that were out there in the community, which needed to be addressed. The rates are right down there. And as part of this, we went through a communications plan. City manager and public works director are very adamant that we have a clear communications plan, along with working with Athens, to make sure that these roughly 45, 4,200 residents were clear on what the requirements were so that they understood why they were being charged suddenly where they may not have been charged in the past. So the city worked with Athens to develop a communications plan to make sure that everybody was contacted. It was a multi-faceted plan. It included an initial letter that was sent to all residents that were affected by this. Only, for clarification, this is only the residents that had extra cart service. If you kept your three cart service or had a core service, or you had no extra services from Athens, you did not receive, those residents did not receive a letter. In that letter, it also anticipated, let them know what the next steps were, what they could anticipate, and what the next, how they could communicate, whether or not they wanted to continue that service. And then we have had regular meetings with Athens almost weekly, discussions with them on how the rollout was going, how the communications were, and also to address any customer service issues in those areas that have come up. The process began in June, June 18th. The initial letter was sent to all of those affected that I referenced earlier regarding the additional black cart, the green carts, and also a flyer was inserted in there with what goes in there, who to contact, how to contact customer service. From July 1st through the 31st, there was a call-in service where Athens was kind of an all-hands-on-deck with their customer service to address any customers that may have inquired. And then as a follow-up to that, a postcard was also mailed out to them. And Athens also had a booth at the street fest to educate residents on what this was, what the new rates were, and what to contact, and also to address any concerns that residents had initially at the street fest. Part of this process also involved the property tax roll, which is what's going through right now. Initially, there was 11,899. As part of this rollout and build of the property tax, as the finance director originally said in a previous presentation, it's a balance. So part of this audit process was going through and determining what is the true number of residents and how that's being done. We are constantly in review of that. Athens is in the process of finishing that up, and we will then continue on that. Any property that is not identified prior to the finalization of the tax roll, Athens will bill them directly with city approval at the same rate, at the core rate, and then those customers and those residents will be added at a later time to the property tax roll. But just because of the deadline, we'll have to, that's the process that we'll do, and those will be audited as well to make sure that those are received. The monitoring, we're doing a current parcel count, which actually I alluded to earlier on that, making sure the property tax roll will continue through September and into December. And any new residents and any new parcels or discrepancies that we identified, those will be included in the FY '27 tax roll that goes on there. Meetings and communications, as I mentioned, we had a meeting with them today, and we will consider continuously do this as we continue to go along. And it is important to note that Athens has, when these customer and these resident inquiries have come up, they have addressed them. We've worked directly with them to make sure that things are addressed, whether it be a difference in cart service or how it's been. So that's where we've been so far.
Thank you for your presentation. I do want to note, before I turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments, that you are available to maybe answer some questions.
Yes, absolutely.
If the public outside has, would like to ask something specific. We do also have an Athens representative.
Yes, Mayor, council members, we have a representative from Athens that can also address any questions or concerns.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, at this time, I'll look around to see if any of my colleagues have any questions, comments. Okay, Sina, I just want to thank you for the presentation. I know many of us contacted Athens with some questions and concerns of some of the feedback that we're getting from some of the residents. And I do want to thank everybody at the Athens side of things because you all were quick in answering the questions and providing some solutions to many of our residents, so we do appreciate that. But again, if anybody in the audience has any questions, comments, we do have the Athens representative, and we have our consultant as well to answer any specific questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items.
Yes. Mayor, members of the city council, at this time, it's the appropriate opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on agenda items. I'm sorry, both on non-agenda items and agenda items prior to the beginning of the statement. Public hearing items do not require a speaker card. We have no public hearing items tonight. The, on this period of time, non-agenda items, a thirty-minute period, will be provided. Anyone who wishes to address the city council may not exceed three minutes per speaker. And state law prohibits the city council from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the mayor and the city council. Do we have public comment cards? We do on non-agenda items. I should note, the time now is 7:41.
Our first speaker is Juan Guzman.
All right. Global warming affects all. We cannot change the past, but we can learn from the past and strive to make it better for generations to come. Small adaptations and implementations construe a greater solution. Trees provide oxygen, they provide it as a byproduct of photosynthesis, a process where trees and plants convert carbon dioxide and water into sugars using sunlight. This process releases oxygen into the atmosphere. Recent needed road modifications and upgrades on Greenwood Avenue have apparently led to road modifications and upgrades on Montebello Boulevard between Whittier Boulevard and Beverly Boulevard, I presume. No community input for that Montebello Boulevard stretch of the Greenwood Avenue project that I am aware was explored. And apparently, such a road beautification project has included the killing of dozens of old trees that grew in the Montebello Boulevard medium. I believe this is incomprehensible. The killing of these trees, these old trees, was not a feasible and a competent option given that trees provides oxygen. The old tree should have been included in whatever traffic congestion design was initially planned. I hope and wish that money is set aside for slaughtered old trees to be replaced in this ongoing beautification project. Even more hopeful for the contracted construction company to donate towards replacing the gone trees they conjured were an eyesore towards their design. Telazo Kamati, buena tarde.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
The next speaker is Henry Terazas, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening, council mayor. Please excuse my appearance. I'm severely disabled. I came here to speak to the director of Parks and Rec, which I did speak to outside, to bring to his attention all the pathetic things that are happening at the senior center. It's horrible. It's a disgrace. I'm confident he will take care of the issue. Second issue is Hannis. From things I have personally witnessed at the fire department, Station 55, all these people that almost crash into emergency vehicles. They don't pay attention. They don't care about the lives of our firefighters. It's horrible. I don't know why you don't cite them or have the City of Montebello enforce the traffic laws right there pertaining to their welfare and their safety. And if Montebello PD won't do it, Highway Patrol will be more than glad to come and do their job for them. They can go to any highway. But the issue needs to be addressed, or with all respect, somebody's going to die. A fire truck's going to get, people are going to get hurt and injured. It's just an outcry. It's very sad. And I don't know why the city doesn't do anything about it. You shouldn't have to tolerate that driving habits. You know, people drive fast, they don't care. But the city needs to put their foot down and take control back of the situation, take the safety and welfare of their city employees. These people risk their lives for us every day. It's just, nothing can be done. It has to be done through you. And I ask, through the mercy of God, did you please use discernment and wisdom and do something about it? They have technology where you can put a signal light, all this stuff, but nothing's being done. We shouldn't wait and see, the wait-and-seers for things to happen. I want to thank the council for your time and effort. God bless you all.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Rosa Tamayo, followed by Raul Hurtado.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mayor Salvador Melendez, en miembros del Consilio de Montebello. Soy Rosa Tamayo.
Mr. Mayor, Salvador Melendez, council members, I'm Rosa Tamayo.
Por favor quiero decirles que en el distrito cuatro y cinco están muy perjudicados los
Please, I would like to tell you that in both districts, four and five.
Los habitantes porque hicieron un contrato con las gruas. Y yo soy muy persistente y tengo muchas amistades en esos distritos.
We are being harmed because there was a contract with tow trucks.
Y me han dicho que es muy caro el millaje para cuando la grúa levanta los carros para Southgate y Huntington Park.
And I have been told that mileage is very expensive when they tow the trucks to Huntington Park.
Cuando hicieron el contrato, no, del servicio de las gruas, no, no se, no analizaron a quién perjudicaría y a quién beneficiaría.
When the tow truck contract was drafted, there was not an analysis as to who it will help and who it would harm.
Y los perjudicados son aquellas personas en desventaja. Yo siempre abogo por la gente en desventaja.
Those who are harmed are those disadvantaged ones. And I always speak up for the disadvantaged people.
Personas que tienen el salario mínimo.
Minimum wage people.
Desgraciadamente, son los esclavos.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, they're like slaves.
Y la cosa es que les quitan sus carros por cualquier situación que sea, pero son 500, 600, 800 dólares y se quedan a veces sin trabajo.
And the issue is their cars are towed away, and they have to pay 500, 600 dollars, and they cannot go to work.
Y la cosa es que ustedes no se dan, hacen un análisis cuando van a hacer un contrato, a quién van a perjudicar.
And what's happening is you're not making, doing an analysis of when drafting a contract, who are you harming?
Y son beneficiados quién?
And who are you helping?
Amigos de ustedes.
Is the benefit for friends of yours?
O las otras ciudades, pero Montebello no. O las otras ciudades, pero Montebello no, es, no está beneficiada.
Or the other cities, but Montebello is not the one that, as a city, does not receive a benefit.
Yo ya les había dicho que Montebello tenía su corralón y tenía su, su servicio de gruas y teníamos la facilidad bastante bien equipada con los detectives y todo, porque pasan muchas cosas con los carros.
I have already mentioned that...
Y con personas también.
Montebello used to have its own city pound, it had its own tow truck service, and we had all the equipment.
Y tienen que analizar cuando tengan esas, esas intereses personales, porque yo lo miro así, interés personal.
So there has to be an analysis of whether there is interest, personal interests at stake, because that's how I see it, there's a personal interest here.
Así que tienen que tener mucho cuidado porque no vayan a tener un problema muy grande.
You have to be very careful.
Con el distrito cuatro y el distrito cinco, que son los más afectados.
You may have a big issue with districts four and five.
Ahorita la gente quiere estar agarrando dinero, dinero, sí, pero es muy fácil, ¿verdad?
They are the ones that are being harmed the most.
Pero hay...
And it's about, is it about making more money?
Pero hay sus consecuencias en adelante.
That brings consequences moving forward.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Raúl Hurtado, followed by Will Severa.
I will begin by saying that I was in attendance at the meeting when the alleged quorum Peralta and Tamayo appointed Rick Alonso to be the District Five City Council Representative. When Scarlett started her mortar mouth and went on and on and on like she normally does, she proceeded to tell anyone within earshot how a great an appointment he was going to be. She went on to say that he was an accomplished engineer. I had to stop and think, she probably does not even know what type of engineer he alleges to be, and I don't think she can name any of his accomplishments. I, on the other hand, like to work with facts. And after I saw and heard the video that he made, I can honestly and factually say that he is an accomplished pendejo. Many years ago, I'm gonna take you back, about approximately 60 years ago, probably before many of you were born, I was in the army, and our country was very divided because we were in a controversial war, controversial war that we should never have been in. After several years of war, the United States pulled out, and we had accomplished absolutely nothing except for losing approximately 55,000 to 56,000 American lives. I believe we have a city park named after one of those casualties. Who knows how many lives were lost on the opposing side? That's why you will never see a picture of me in uniform on a banner on Whittier Boulevard, nor will you ever see me line up to speak at the microphone on Veterans Day. I don't seek, nor do I want acknowledgement nor recognition. But on the other hand, I'll be damned if I will sit silent and listen to this pendejo when he says that he doesn't think that if I don't think the way he does, I am a coward. If I don't agree with him, I am not patriotic. If I don't agree with him, F me, and I should leave. I should leave the country I was born in and served? I will gladly show him my birth certificate, and he can show me his. I would gladly show him my DD 214, and he can show me his. I would gladly show him my honorable discharge, and he can show me his. Then, this will show us who the coward really is. This will show us who is patriotic and who is not. Then we will know who should leave. I must say, although it's against my religion, he makes a remarkable argument for birth control and abortion. I think the four of you need to take a vote and unappoint this pendejo. Please allow me to salute him with the middle finger of my right hand.
If we can please, Mr. Hurtado, refrain from, we can please have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Will Severa, followed by Linda Nicholas.
I'd like to guys, remind you, we can flip off, we can talk about the staff, we can talk about you guys anytime we please, any way we like, that is our First Amendment right. Also, from the last meeting before you guys went on to the closed session for July, Arnold Glassman opened his fucking mouth again and was worried about other people that are around here for Chief Louie. That is not your place, you do not run this meeting. As a matter of fact, maybe if you guys actually had some balls, you would make this fucker get into the pulpit. And I'm gonna continue, do not stop me, do not interrupt me.
I will give you your time back, Mr. Severa, we just, we do have kids.
I understand what you have, but this is my right and you're not gonna interrupt me on this.
But we have to have a professional meeting as well.
No, you look at Allee City, and look at other cities, this have gone a quarter already, please do not make another lawsuit. So, I'm gonna continue, I'm gonna continue, thank you. So, basically, good evening. I want to speak about an important matter regarding the appointee, Daniel Cadrano Romero. Why are you hosting a Car Club event for Orpheus at the city golf course? Why is the Department of California American Legion logo being used on the Car Club flyer as advertisement? Strangely, it's not our local 272 logo. Daniel, have you, you have been telling people that the Car Club is raising funds for collecting money for supposedly for those veterans that were recently deported, which I agree, would be an amazing act for the community. However, does Orpheus have a 501(c)(3) to be able to collect the money? And it's really interesting because Brad Perrin seems to have a tendency to be whining and dying, you guys. Scarlett Peralta miraculously was able to get, what was it, $30,000, Scarlett? From Brad Perrin's donations between Logan and so forth and all of his entities? And then you were also able to get your ice cream, you were able to get your In-N-Out. So it's pretty interesting to see how Brad Perrin gives things, because there was two other events for also 501(c)(3) that were gonna get charged $30,000 and above. But for some reason you were able to get it, I wonder what he needs to be voted on? Rumor is, he also just paid for the two restrooms to be revamped at the American Legion, which I'm happy for the veterans, they deserve it. But I'm curious, what price tag does that come with? Because I heard you're pretty easy to buy. So, I got about a minute left, so let's see, what can we play with here? As far as jackass over there, I agree with Mr. Hurtado, he shouldn't be speaking about that. And since you want to stop me about my speaking, I kinda want to show you what he was saying and how he was disrespectful to our legacy and our people that are born here and serve for this country. He hasn't done shit. And yet he wants to go tell people to move and to leave? That's ridiculous. So I just wanted people to be able to hear him. You have to wet the nature papers to shame someone else's pain. So here's what we continue to do. We stay alert, we record everything, we build trust, we build a network, we use encrypted apps. In the real world, we talk to each other, we protect each other. Just reminding you guys, you took also an oath, but I'm sure you don't even care because you don't even care about the rules. That's why you're appointed there, but it's all right. September, the corona will be served to Rob Bonta, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, if we can please have the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Linda Nicholas, followed by Tila Gregorian.
Good evening, those are tough acts to follow, but they were totally right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Linda and staff, community. I would like to wish our group, Match 90640, Montebello Activists to Clean House, a happy anniversary. Ten years ago today, a group of concerned residents decided we needed to form a group to help our community. We each had an equal voice, we never had a president, everyone had the same rights. We were called by parents with children at Bella Vista Elementary School, asking for our help. There was a gas leak on the school property, and Southern California Gas Company had shut off all the gas services to the school, which meant the schoolrooms, the classrooms were cold, no hot water, and no hot lunches. We wrote letters to our legislators, we spoke at the Montebello Unified School District Board meetings, and complained about the abuse of the spending of the board members and the money, the bond money and the millions. We were successful in causing the audit of the school board's actions and wasteful spending of bond money. The Montebello Unified School District Board was put under conservatorship, and not even a pencil could be purchased without permission by the school board members. That is when we wrote to the legislators regarding the illegal contracts and wasteful money being spent here in our city by former council members. On May 18th, on May 16th, excuse me, 2018, members of our group went to Sacramento and testified before the Joint Legislative Auditor's Committee and made history. We had no senator, we had no assembly person to represent us. We won a unanimous 13-0, full forensic audit, deeming our city a high-risk municipality. The report read, 14 out of 16 contracts awarded were in fact done illegally. We are proud to continue helping our community and are happy to see two new groups, Montebello Voices and Montebello United, also looking out for our city. They're the young guards, the now, the new guys protecting our city from the corruption up here. On another note, Scarlett, your pathetic dog park is putting dogs in danger. Here's a picture of the temperature at the dog park, at the ground, okay? 127 degrees. The street was 129 degrees. The asphalt on the street was two degrees difference from what you have those dogs walking on. By letting those dogs walk there, they're burning their paws, they're also inhaling toxic fumes. I would like, I would dare you, Scarlett, go walk barefoot on your beloved dog park. I'd love to see your feet get blistered, you deserve it, for doing that to the poor dogs. Shame on you. And that Bluebeard, call Channel 5 and tell him to come and look at our toxic dog park. Kimberly, would you give us just...
Thank you for your comments.
Here's a, here's a picture to prove what I'm saying.
If we, if we can have the next speaker, please?
Yes, our last speaker is Tila Gregorian.
Good evening, council members, city staff, and city residents. My name is Tila Gregorian, resident of Montebello for most of my life, but I hear, I wish I could come and say something good. I'm just trying to come and praise our council, but I just cannot. We have two council members that are sitting up there in the diocese that were not legally, they're not council members. There was not a quorum when they stepped up, when they stopped to, stepped up to, to become members, city council members. They were, there was not, three people have to, to choose whether they want you on the, as, in the council or not, if you're not voted by the citizens of the city. So, I mean, we have three council members that were voted by us, the residents of our city, and we have two that were not even appointed when there was a quorum. So I have a real bad issue, I mean, I have a real hard time putting up with this nonsense because I do not like what's going on in our city. We also have a, a police chief that was on medical leave, and then he got fired. I didn't know you could fire someone that was on medical leave. But anyway, maybe Arnold can explain that to us, since he's our city lawyer, attorney, I should say. The best, I do want to commend that the best city manager that our city has ever had was Renee Bonbabea, and unfortunately, Scarlett, Charlotte Scarlett, fired him. I mean, give me a break, and Arlene, what happened to her? She was the best person in our city to go to whenever you had something that was going on. Our new city manager came in with this cloning, and she lost her job. I mean, what the heck is going on in our city? You're doing things that are so unethical. Do we no longer have ethics in our city? Well, you know, I've lived in Montebello most of my life, and I want our residents to be aware of this, because election time's coming, and I want them to know what is going on in our city. I want to remind them.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Do we have any, any other speakers? No? Thank you everybody for your public comments. At this time, we'll move on to staff communication and items of community interest.
Yes, Mayor, council members. Want to update the community and council on quite a few things. It's been a busy July while we were on break. Wanted to update you first on the humanitarian services program. As the residents may, may remember, in June, the city council took a, what I would say, a very bold action of appropriating $100,000 to assist families and residents from the city of Montebello that have been impacted by the immigration raids. This funding was intended to help these families with rental assistance, utilities, and any ancillary impacts that they're going through. So, wanted to give just where we're at to date. Today, we have 44 families enrolled, families from Montebello that were currently assisting, assisting. Twelve of those family, twelve of those families are getting rental assistance, 28 families have gotten food assistance and continue to get food assistance, 12 families have received assistance with utilities. And overall, and I want to say over the framework of case management, we have 50 families that are considered case management. While the program was approved for specific items, there's also ancillary impacts, including mental health, medical services, things of that nature, legal services that were also assisting families. To date, this program continues to go strong. We, I think I mentioned in our staff report, the way that we were structuring this, we were using our in-house staff, our MCAT team, our folks that are professionals in mental health services, social workers, in addition to the regular duties, are also managing this program. So we continue to, to work hard to make sure that we assist the families in Montebello. In addition, related to this, I want to commend our mayor, council, for their ongoing leaderships and their attempts to build partnerships to help these families. During our break, we got some good news due to the efforts of the mayor and council. Our county supervisor agreed to give our city $50,000 additionally to our humanitarian services program. So it's an additional funding source that we'll be able to, to use to help our residents. So thank you to our county supervisors, thank you again, mayor, council members for your ongoing, ongoing leadership. Additionally, during the break, we've done several legal workshops with MAOF. Also, again, commending council and their leadership, we also did, one of the gaps in the assistance program has been the business community. They've been impacted on many, many levels. So our council alongside our staff took the initiative to basically have a, one day, it was a Saturday, it took quite a, quite a few days for us to get organized, but basically we went out to basically canvass most of the cities and the, and most of the businesses in our city. We provided information in terms of what's happening, in terms of their rights, what they can, what they can't do. We actually provided literature, information that they can use, the red cards and the stop signs that actually prevent any, any authority from coming into a private space. And one of the good things is that our staff is actually able to let us know that when they go to the businesses, this information is actually out there, right? So it's been affected, it's well-received. Our council and our staff, been a very hot Saturday, walking all day to ensure that our business community got this information. So, so thank you again for your ongoing leadership, council. Another key thing that happened during our break, we, the city of Montebello are one of seven cities, including the city of LA and some of our neighboring cities, that actually joined and filed a lawsuit, a temporary restraining order against the federal government regarding their efforts on immigration. Our city attorney, maybe you can kind of update us on where we're at with the litigation?
Certainly, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, members of the city council. It should be noted, the forefront of this litigation was the city of Montebello. When the item was first brought to my attention by the city attorney of the city of Los Angeles, we brought this to the attention of the city council. The city of Montebello, to the city of LA, we had made a request to seek certain jurisdictions within LA County to support the action that was previously filed by individual parties who were being impacted by the ICE efforts, the ICE enforcement efforts. City of Montebello directed my office to participate by seeking a joiner into the original lawsuit. We were, Montebello is one of the handful, I believe, initially, there were eight different jurisdiction cities that did indicate a willingness to participate with the city of Los Angeles. There were motions that were filed. There were motions that were filed. There was a hearing that was conducted before federal, federal court, federal district court judge, and she ruled in favor of the, the petitioners and also the cities by issuing a temporary restraining order. And I should note that temporary restraining are still in effect at this point. The federal government opposed the issuance of a temporary restraining order, a TRO. The court denied the federal government's request. That matter was then appealed to the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit is a panel of judges, justices that governs the area of California and other states. The Ninth Circuit granted in upholding the TRO issued by, by the judge in the federal level. And it shouldn't be noted that the, the TRO encompasses not just Los Angeles County, but it also encompasses San Bernardino County, Riverside County, also Pantera County, and I think that covers them all. The, the federal government has since appealed the decision by the Ninth Circuit now to the United States Supreme Court. Over the last couple of days, my office has been involved in working with the attorneys, both from the city of Los Angeles, other cities, and also lead counsel, Munger Tolles, who's handling the, the matter on behalf of the individually named parties. We've been participating in, joining in on the Supreme Court amicus brief, and amicus brief is a, a brief that is filed by parties who are in, in concert with the main parties of the litigation. So, the city of Montebello is an amicus brief participant. Also, today, we, I was working with the city manager's office to filing additional declarations that have been submitted by not only our city manager, but other city managers in support of the effort to turn the temporary restraining order into a permanent injunction. That hearing is coming up later this month. With that, the, the city is still actively involved in the litigation and protecting the rights of, of our citizens through the temporary restraining order process.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I also want to, want to update the community during, during our July break, we did spend a, a good week in Washington DC. I was joined with staff alongside Councilmember Peralta, Councilmember Romero, where we spent a good week talking to our legislators and our Capitol, our committee staff, transportation staff, where we were actually lobbying on behalf to try to secure some funding on transit, fire-related, police, police items. So, thank you, council, for joining us in that. These were really fruitful conversations and hopefully we come back with some good news that we'll receive some federal funding. The last item I wanted to update the community about, this is something I'm very happy about during the break. I, I did appoint Angelica Palmeros as our permanent assistant city manager. Over the last six months, Angelica has performed admirably in her acting capacity. During this time, Angelica has demonstrated the leadership qualities, work ethic, and skill set necessary to serve as an assistant city manager. Previously, Angelica served as deputy director of our fire department for four years. Professionally, Angelica brings over twenty years of experience in municipal government. Academically, she has a BA from Cal State LA and a master's in social work with an emphasis in public administration from the University of Southern California. During her tenure with our city, Angelica has been instrumental with implementing key initiatives and programs to our fire depart, for our fire department, which have enhanced the services for residents. Foremost, she was instrumental in creating the MCAT program, which frankly, if, if we didn't have in place this, this crucial program that helps with our homeless services on a regular basis, we wouldn't have actually also been able to pivot to assist families with these immigration services. So, it's something that, you know, we're very proud of and we thank Angelica for, for bringing that to our city. I welcome Angelica's experience and positive demeanor, which will help our city move forward. I have full confidence that Angelica will succeed in this role. If you see her around, please congra, join me and congratulate her. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, for all those updates. Congrats on Angelica on behalf of myself and the whole city council. We're not going to make you do a speech, but, you know, just, again, congratulations on that. We'll move on to our regular business portion of the agenda, item number eight, adopt resolution number twenty-five slash eleven, accepting the State Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Urban Forest Management Plan Agreement. I know we do have a, a presentation, a verbal presentation from our Director of Public Works. Do we have any speakers? I think it would be appropriate to take the speaker at this point.
Speaker for number, item number eight is Greg Gonzalez.
Good evening and thank you. First, briefly, I still call on the council to move closed session to the end of these meetings. It's rude to ask people to wait for eighty-two minutes guessing when the meeting will actually start. Deputy City Clerk Guillen told me before the meeting that would just be a simple resolution to adopt. But, on to item number eight. It's discouraging to hear about the trees on Greenwood Avenue, but I commend the city and those involved in, hopefully, securing the grant with a unanimous vote for seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to help with our urban forest and well-documented sparse tree canopy. Regarding the grant, this is a start. I look forward to being part of placing those trees along the sixty freeway corridor where they are most needed, including very close to the Bella Vista School, which was recently mentioned, as well as the planting and maintenance thereof. I look forward to more information regarding all of that. I also hope this is a call to action to continue the efforts to place environmental justice at the top of the city's priorities, including a native plant landscaping ordinance, not just water-wise planting, a single-use plastic ban, a plastic water bottle ban at City Hall. We're doing better with that, I can see around. As well as continued efforts to create spaces for physical, emotional, and mental wellness here in National Wellness Month, and continued education toward those efforts. I and like-minded citizens will be in contact to support the same. We are eight miles from the capital of the Pacific Rim. We can be global leaders onward and upward. Let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other speakers on this item? No? Okay, we'll move on to the presentation by Mr. Roldan.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members, and city staff, and our residents in the community watching at home. I want to thank staff for working really diligently with the state on securing these funds. At some point in time, the city had received these funds several months back, the federal government came in and took the funds away, and through some lobbying efforts from other, other cities that had received similar grants, and us putting in the time, we were successful at securing the grant. As we work towards the future, we are looking and seeking opportunities to work with several consultants that work with this, working with our existing consultants who purchase trees, and then, like Mr., the professor just spoke, giving him an opportunity to also assist us in our public outreach. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. At this time, I'll, I'll see if any of my colleagues have any questions, comments on this item. Councilor Peralta?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor. I do, do want to recognize the gentleman that was here earlier, Mr. Juan Guzman. And if I may speak, speak very briefly to that issue, I think it still ties back to trees and then come back to this. In terms of Montebello Boulevard, I know one of the most immediate things I saw when trees were being removed was flagging that and asking why the trees were removed. May you please just provide a brief explanation as well as the assurances that we will be replacing the trees and adding additional landscape, landscape being measures to that medium?
Happy to talk about that. Council member, yes, the Whittier Boulevard project is a pretty significant project for us as part of the, as part of us redoing the medians. We have to assess the, the infrastructure, the trees that were currently there, where I actually, uh, roofing, lifting the, the cement, the sidewalk, what have you. So we did remove them, but we are going to be replacing the trees. The, Caesar maybe can tell us exactly how many trees we're planning on replacing at this point, but we're going through the project right now.
We're putting, we're doubling in the amount of trees. And what we've also done is we've purchased larger trees, forty-eight inch boxes, which will make the tree canopy and the medians stand out. And many of those trees were also diseased, unfortunately. They're just aging trees. Trees don't live forever, just like, just like us, they're living beings, and unfortunately they have a lifespan as well.
Thank you. I do want to just give a, like a star effort in terms of actually planting larger trees. I think that's one of the issues that I've highlighted in the past, especially like if you go right now up the Montebello Boulevard where we, where a few years ago, we did the medium there. It's a lot of young trees, and as we know, young trees will take a life, lifeline here to actually grow and create the canopy that we want in our city. And so, I appreciate the fact that we are looking at replacing the trees that were moved with larger trees to ensure that we, we are keeping the canopy that we once had there in that part of, of our city. I appreciate the responses there in terms of the concerns that were brought up for that. But in terms of this specific item, I do just really want to commend you, Director Roldan, as well as our city manager, in terms of getting this done. I looked back at my past council orals in my time on council, and the first time I spoke about the importance of tree canopy, green infrastructure, partnerships with tree people was back in two thousand and twenty-one. Since then, I had been fighting for, for this item or this issue to be taken seriously, and I was always hitting a closed door. I would never, was never getting answers in terms of despite providing council direction, having these types of partnerships realized, or going after these types of grant funding opportunities. You all have been serving in these roles, I think, a little bit over a year now, and to really take this seriously and to showcase the importance of bringing on these partners. And most immediately, after you both came on, we actually established the partnership with Tree People. They actually came down to the city of Montebello, they gave us a full presentation to the council. I think it was like thirty minutes long. We were just, I remember, we made some comments in terms of how much time they took. And then we actually identified and went after this funding. And I know through that process, we've encountered those closed doors. I think for a moment, Tree People didn't necessarily take Montebello seriously, and I think that's something that you advocated. Do you mind talking a little bit in terms of that initial reaction that we received and how we were able to then establish that partnership?
Yeah, I, I, the approach for us, well, first, I want to begin, like, because we're talking about Whittier tree replacement, I can tell you, replacing trees is literally the last option that we consider as a city. Just for reference, you, we really don't remove trees unless it's, it's a threat to public safety, or if the tree is damaged or rooted, or in the case of this project, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna basically impact the project long-term, right? But, but if we do remove trees, we do replace it. From the very beginning, it's been something that's we've been, it's been a concerted effort for us in getting this grant. I mean, it was really twofold, trying to build this relationship with Tree People. I've worked with Tree People in other municipalities. Tree People has, has an emphasis and underserved community, park per communities, communities that, that lack trees. So, I, I would say that probably initially, and, and we have this partnership, we're, we're great with them, but initially, the reception was that we, we were, we're not traditionally the community that, that Tree People would be working in. So, I, I, I keep thanking council, but Councilmember Peralta, you were instrumental in, in making sure we're on the same room. We talked, we advocated. You know, it took some time for us to first establish this relationship with Tree People, right? Secondarily, once we, we worked with them, we, we jointly submitted this grant application and made our case, made our case for, for, for state and federal funding to receive this, this grant. Last, we got this grant a while ago, and then they didn't have any money, so we were a little, we were kind of, you know, hanging, hanging, hanging on until we finally got this money. So this will finally, for a first time, actually help us create a tree management plan and give us the resources and funding for us to actually replace significant amount of trees in Montebello.
Thank you. I appreciate that walkthrough and a lot of this advocacy and the work that we do, you know, it, there's a lot of road, roadblocks that we encounter, and so I appreciate the fact that despite having these closed doors, you all did your best to advocate to ensure that Montebello was taken seriously and that we were worth investing in. And this is the, the realization of all that work and now being able to access nearly, nearly a million dollars, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, to be able to ensure that we're investing back into the sustainability of our community. And so, this specific grant will develop our city's first urban forest management plan. So it will basically assess the city as a whole in terms of our inventory of trees, identify where there is a lack of trees within our city, we'll be able to establish the types of trees that we want to plant in the future for the city. I know there's a lot of interest in terms of non-invasive native plants, oaks, beautiful trees that are gonna create a better aesthetic for our community. And with that plan, we'll be able to have community workshops to be able to ensure that we receive feedback from the community. So I do welcome you, Mr. Gonzalez, in joining us, as well as others that are interested in this specific topic. And then from that, we do have a mandate within the grant to plant at least five hundred trees throughout the city. So I think this is a very big win for a lot of folks that have been advocating for sustainability, green infrastructure, urban canopy here in the city of Montebello. We are a city that is enclosed by multiple freeways, we have very bad air quality, and so this is something that will go towards improving the future of our city. And I do also want to thank Mr. Gonzalez, in terms of your advocacy, you've come to these council meetings time after time to advocate on the importance of sustainability and planting more trees. I remember, I think, two years ago or so, we met at Tierra Mia with your wife, and, you know, you were like, hey, Scarlett, why don't we have enough trees? What's going on? Why is this taking long? And so, you have kept me accountable in terms of this specific passion of yours that you have in terms of sustainability, and I appreciate that. We've been able to work together in terms of writing letters of support and ensuring that this is a, this is an issue that does not go unnoticed and isn't being taken seriously. So very excited for what's ahead in terms of the impact that this will have, and just want to thank my council, our council here as well, for the support and for continuing this advocacy. So, with that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? We have Mayor Protemp, Mayo.
I just had, I do want to add also that the process typically includes, what we're trying to push through the process of receiving the funding and spending it as soon as possible. So I don't know, city manager, if you can speak a little bit to that, so that, because we had the funds and we lost them, so now the attempt is to try to go through the process, including the RFPs. So that's part of our approval this evening.
Yeah, with this item, we're typically, well, twofold, the, the, the RFP and the award of the tree man, to actually do the tree management plan, usually we'll bring that as a separate item. Likewise, the acquisition of the trees, that would be brought as, as a second item, because this, this money is a pass-through funding source from the federal government, which is why it was held up originally. There is some concern of this money not being there, so we're actually moving on a very expedited timeline, and I thank Caesar and his staff for, for actually accommodating that. So, what we're doing with this item is actually receiving these funds and incorporating it as part of our, our budgetary process. But we're, I'm also asking council to give me the permission to go ahead and have an expedited process, get approvals in advance for me to work towards getting, procuring these services for the tree management plan in addition to procuring the, the trees. So we are working on a, a unique expedited timeline for this specific grant to ensure that that money is spent while it's there.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments, questions? No? Okay, at this time, I just want to echo all the sentiments that my colleagues have shared, as well as staff. I think this is a, a big win for, for the city of Montebello, and it's been, there's been some challenges, but again, I think with the advocacy of council, residents, and everybody coming together, this is going to be a really big thing for the city. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Alonso, and we have a second by Councilmember Peralta. If we can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp, Mayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. That item carries five oh. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, award agreement number forty-three seventy-seven to JNA Engineering Corporation for the Rio Hondo Coastal Spreading Grounds Fence Replacement Project. And we do have a presentation also by our Public Works Director. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, once again. City Council-
Uh, City Council, this is also another project that's been in the works for several years now. Uh, we are working diligently to get this project started. Uh, the goal is to, uh, award the contract as soon as possible so the fabrication of the fence could start. Uh, we will be starting at Bluff and Sycamore and work our way up north as much as possible uh, to use, utilize and maximize the grant amount. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, do we have any, uh, speakers for this item?
We do not.
Okay, I'll bring it up to the council level. Are there any questions from any of my colleagues? Comments? Councilor Peralta?
Y- yes, um, I did want to just, uh, uh, flag. I know that there has been, um, several concerns or questions in terms of the endpoint and the start point to the replacement of the Bluff Road fence. Um, Mr. City Manager, can you please confirm, um, uh, specifically why we are going towards these specific, uh, uh, starting points and endpoints?
Uh, ye- yes, Councilmember. So, um, as folks may remember, this, this grant has been in the, in the books for, for, for many, many, many years. Uh, and, and so there's been discussion of where the starting point endpoint was. And, and frankly, we're working actually based on what the grant application was. Um, and, and the, Mr. Roldan can correct me wrong, but basically the starting point is gonna be from Sycamore, uh, going north, correct? As far, as far as possible while the funds are still available, correct?
That's correct, sir.
And that's again, that's what was explicitly included in the original grant application.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and also again, just want to commend, uh, this item specifically. Uh, this is one that, uh, as, uh, mentioned, uh, we received grant funding for way back, uh, a few years ago. Uh, there's been a lot of, I think, confusion even among council in terms of, uh, how the funding was being used, whether we had started the project, what was causing the delay in the project. Um, and so I really appreciate the fact that, um, as well, um, our, our director and you really prioritized, uh, getting this, uh, through and ensuring that the feasibility study was done. Um, and that we're now at a point where we actually, uh, can commence construction to replace the Bluff, uh, Bluff Road fence. This grant funding does have a time limit. So, um, I think that, that was extremely important that you, you, uh, both prioritize this to ensure that we don't lose this funding. Um, and I think again, this is a big win, uh, to our community in the south. Uh, that, um, as you drive, uh, Bluff Road, that, that specific fence is completely dilapidated. There's a lot of issues, uh, in terms of littering, um, and dumping. And so, uh, this is, uh, gonna be a re- a really great project, um, once it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you for those, uh, for your comments. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? The only question I have, uh, for this, I have two questions. One, um, if we can just revisit again what the projected cost, uh, the fence is gonna be, uh, when, and I'm, uh, specifically, uh, the accounting, the grant money that we're getting and any additional projected, uh, funding from the general fund?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you so much. So the city received a grant for nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the state. Um, as you had previously requested, we added an additional three hundred thousand. So that's one million, two thirty-five total, excuse me, that we will be utilizing towards the fence.
Thank you. And, uh, just, um, if you can explain a little bit, um, just for, um, folks can visualize a little bit, like the fence material that's gonna go there. Um, so folks can kind of see, uh, you know, kind of see what, what's gonna be put in there.
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, the existing fence now is a chain link fence. Uh, originally, the, the grant itself, uh, spoke about a wrought iron fence. Unfortunately, what's gonna happen, uh, it's easy to bend wrought iron. Uh, so what we're gonna do is just spend most of Public Works' time just, um, fixing and repairing the fence. Uh, so what we did is we looked at several options. One of the options that we looked at was right off the sixty freeway. Um, Caltrans had put in a brand new fence and that, uh, pretty much delineates, uh, the landscaped area and the right-of-way, our public right-of-way. But we saw that, that too was a little too weak, so it's easy to cut that open. Uh, a lot of the fencing around Bluff Road is, 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 um, you could come in with pliers or anything like that and just cut the fence. Uh, so we wanted something a little bit more structurally sound. Uh, so we, we dedicated time to designing something that was gonna be more sturdy. Um, so the fence, their ten-foot panels, um, they will be extremely solid. And so we're looking to place, um, the fence on more sturdier ground, moving it a little bit closer to the street relative to where the existing fence is right now. Uh, because my fear is that if we put it in the same place, then the fence will just fall over. Uh, but a, a ten-foot panel is probably weighing about a hundred and fifty, two hundred pounds. So it's quite strong. We, we do have a sample in our engineering, um, area. If you wanna, you know, lift weights, you know, you're welcome to come over and pump some iron. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And again, thank you to, um, to everybody who worked on this. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
Hi, motion.
So we have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I'll second.
We have a second, uh, by Councilor Peralta. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp, Mayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. That item carries five oh. We'll move on to item number ten, the Authorization to Adopt Plans, Specifications and Engineers' Estimate for Construction of the Traffic Signal at Whittier Boulevard and Sixth Street and Proceed with Bid Advertisement. Pretty sure we'll go to our, yep, Public Works Director.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, again, this is a fantastic project. Uh, the community in that area have longed for a traffic signal at Whittier and Sixth Street. Uh, in combination with the request from Councilmember Peralta, we went ahead and did, uh, an art piece that's dedicated to the Scramble Crosswalk. Art in public places is something that's, we strive as well, uh, to beautify the community. So we're excited about going out to bid for this project.
Thank you for that. Uh, Kimberly, do we have any, uh, speakers for this item?
There are no speakers.
No speakers. Okay, uh, this time we'll be at the council level for discussion. Do any of my colleagues have any comments, questions on this item? Okay, uh, just, uh, I think we're all excited for this and, uh, it's a big, uh, it's gonna be a big change in that part of our, um, of our, of our, of our community. I know many residents have been advocating for it. We know the concerns too, uh, of having such active area in that, uh, on the, on the, on the Whittier Boulevard. So, uh, we're extremely excited to see the final outcome. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
Hi, motion.
I'll motion to approve.
All right, we have a first by Councilmember Peralta and then we'll have a second by Councilmember Alonso. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp, Mayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. That item carries five oh. We'll move on to item number eleven, Award Construction, uh, Contract Agreement Number Forty-three Seventy-one to CEM Construction Corporation for the Downtown Sewer Replacement Project. Back to, we, we gotta get you some tea or something for all these presentations. Back to our Public Works Director.
Thank you, uh, Light Honey, please. Um, I want to appreciate the opportunity also here, uh, to the Community Development Department. We went ahead and spoke to the Chamber of Commerce, introducing both, um, item number ten and number eleven, um, so that any sort of impacts affecting the businesses that the chamber's aware of and that we're willing to go out there and do public outreach. Uh, we will be walking the streets, informing the community, both the residents, uh, just north and south of Whittier Boulevard that are affected by the project. And, you know, obviously giving them my information so that they could call me or email me if there are any issues. Uh, this is a good opportunity here to be in compliance with the state as well. Uh, what makes this one unique is we do have a two-point-one-million-dollar grant from the state that we do have to finish by February. And so we are pushing the contractor to work, you know, two shifts. If need be to finish the project within February, uh, twenty-twenty-six. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any speakers on this item?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, no speakers. Uh, this time I'll be at the, uh, council level for discussion. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions on this item? Councilor Peralta?
Uh, yeah, so, um, as we know, with the, uh, Whittier Boulevard, um, medium and street repaving, um, as well as now with, uh, this specific project, uh, for the, for the Downtown Sewer Replacement Project, there's gonna be, uh, as you said, a lot of impact to that nearby area, which is heavily trafficked by cars as well as, uh, businesses that, um, operate out of there. I do just, um, want to ensure, uh, that there is in advance communication and opportunities for both the neighbors that live in the area as well as the businesses that operate, uh, to be well aware of the impacts that are forthcoming and just, uh, you know, ensuring that we are working hand in hand with, uh, folks to try to mitigate, um, those, uh, those impacts. As we all know, um, as much as, uh, we work towards, uh, changing and improving our community, we have to bear the impacts of, uh, those developments. And so, um, just want to make sure we do prioritize that. Um, that concludes my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, uh, just, uh, on this one, this is one of those projects that you, um, it's, you don't really see the, the, the impact that it's gonna have, but it's a huge impact in, in this part of town, in our downtown area with our sewers. Um, I do have similar concerns that the Councilor Peralta, um, did bring up. There's a lot of activity that's gonna be happening in that area. So just, um, assuring that we have the proper notices, both to the business community and the residents. And, you know, because it's just, we're throwing a lot of there, we're making a lot of change, but just there's a lot of activity there.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. We're being very mindful of the impacts and, and the communications we have with, with the community. Uh, we ask the community to bear with us and residents, just, um, out of sight, out of mind, right? But these are pretty, this is a big project, important project. Um, you know, we're not concerned about it until sewers get out and then massive issues happen with the community. So we, we wouldn't be doing this project unless it was absolutely necessary. So, but we're gonna be very mindful in terms of the communication and outreach to ensure we minimize the impact as much as possible.
Thank you for that. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
Hi, motion.
We have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I second.
We have a second by Councilmember Romero. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp, Mayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. All right, we'll move on to item number twelve. Adopt Resolution Number Twenty-five slash sixty-four, approving a memorandum of understanding Number, uh, Twenty-five slash ten, MOU between the City of Monobello and the Monobello Management Professional Association, MMMPA. Uh, do we have any speakers for this item?
Yes, we have one speaker.
Okay, at this time it will be appropriate to, uh, to have a speaker come up?
Our speaker for item number twelve is Linda Nicholas.
Can't believe she might have left. Okay, uh, all right, we have, uh, we have a presentation, not by Public Works Director, but by HR.
Yeah, unless there's any questions, uh, we're happy to entertain a motion.
All right, uh, is there any questions on this item? Any comments?
Just really quickly, this will be an overall comment because I, uh, to the two upcoming, um, items that are very similar. Um, just want to congratulate the team here, uh, both sides in terms of our employees as well as, um, our HR for reaching a memorandum of, of understanding with three, these three main, uh, bargaining units in terms of reaching a twelve-and-a-half percent salary, uh, base salary increase with additional, um, increases to educational incentives, certification, uniform, um, and other, uh, fringe benefits. Um, just overall, uh, very grateful to get us to this point here. I know it's a lot of work, uh, working within ten bargaining units and ensuring that, uh, we are being respectful, um, and really taking care of our employees. But at work, but at the same time that we're also being mindful, um, of, uh, the expenses that we have as a city as a whole. Um, so just wanted to go ahead and congratulate everyone for their work on that end. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Um, I, do, do we have any other speakers for any of, uh, items twelve through sixteen? They're all MOUs.
Linda Nicholas pulled all items with the, for the MOUs, but she's no longer here.
Okay, so, um, at this time, I think it'd be appropriate, uh, they're, they all, um, they're all MOUs. Uh, City Attorney, can we have a single motion to approve all those items?
Yes, you can have a motion, a second to approve all the items. Then if you get, want comments from your colleagues that, after that's, motion's been approved. So that's approval of the MOUs for items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, twelve, thirteen, wait, twelve?
Twelve through sixteen.
Twelve through sixteen.
A motion to approve?
We have a first by, uh, Mayor Protemp, Mayo.
I second.
We have a second by, uh, Councilmember Romero. Uh, is there anybody that would like to speak on any of these items? No? Okay, uh, we can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp, Mayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. So those items carry five oh. Uh, and congratulations for, uh, the team that, uh, worked on this. Um, I know we have some of our HR people here, just, uh, you know, for your commitment and, uh, and for all the bargaining groups as well. I know it's, it's, uh, we see it here in paper, but there's a lot of back and forth that goes on. So I just want to commend you all, uh, and thank you for, uh, for getting this done. Thank you. We'll move on to, uh, the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the items listed under consent are, uh, for council consideration, they are considered to be routine. Any member, any item the member wishes to discuss should, uh, should, um, be designated at this time. I'll inquire if we have any requests to speak for members of the public on consent.
No, we do not.
Okay. So we have, uh, items seventeen through, um, let's see. There's gonna be one item pulled from the City Manager's office. Item seventeen through thirty-seven.
Yeah, I wanna, um, I, I wanna go ahead and pull item number twenty-seven for discussion.
Yes. So at this point in time, uh, let me poll the council. And these would be items, again, numbers, um, yeah. Now, uh, seventeen through thirty-seven, with the exception of item number twenty-seven, correct? Yes. Yeah, okay. We'll start with, uh, Councilmember Peralta. Do you have any additional items?
Item nineteen?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Alonso, any items from consent?
No items.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Romero, any items from the consent agenda?
No items.
Thank you. Mayor Protemp, Mayo, do you have any items in the consent?
Item twenty-three, please.
Item which one again? Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Okay. And Mayor Melendez?
No items.
Okay. With that then, it's appropriate for the City Council to, uh, consider approving a motion for items number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-eight and items twenty-nine through thirty-seven. Is there a motion to that affect, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, all items, sorry, that you read except nineteen. Oh, you had included nineteen.
Included nineteen.
But I, I want to pull it.
So why don't we re- reread it just for the record?
Okay.
So the, what were, it was nineteen, twenty-three and twenty-six. Nineteen, twenty-three and twenty-six.
Yeah, those are the only items we pulled. My apologies.
Okay, uh, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Hi, motion.
We have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I'll second.
A second by Councilor Peralta. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp, Mayo?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, those items are approved. We'll move on to item number nineteen. Uh, I believe that was pulled by Councilmember Peralta.
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to pull this item to, um, highlight in, um, in terms of National Wellness Month. in terms of National Wellness Month. Um, I really did wanna flag this in terms of the purchase of cortical wellness application for the Montebello Police Department in terms of just uh, ensuring that we are providing uh, these types of services to our first responders and officers that oftentimes um, are putting themselves in very dangerous situations and having to deal with the aftermath in terms of what comes uh, with those situations. And so um, I just wanted to highlight uh, the support for this and thank our chief for bringing this forward as well to his uh, department.
Thank you for that. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I'll motion to approve.
We have a first by Councilmember Peralta.
I second.
We have a second by Councilmember Alonso. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamaio?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. That item carries five oh. We'll move on to item number twenty-three, that was pulled by Mayor Protem Tamaio.
Yes. Um, so Montebello has a seat on the, it's the uh, Gateways City cog, which represents about twenty-five cities. So this cog is going to pay for the installation and operation of a, a regional fiber optic uh, broadband network. Um, it's about a hundred and three-million-dollar project that aims to improve the digital equity broadband access and economic development a, amongst the region. So I just wanna point out that because Montebello sits on this seat, on the cog, that we are getting um, this brought over to our city.
Thank you for uh, your comments. Is uh, there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll uh, entertain a motion to approve this item.
Hi, motion.
We have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I second.
Second by Mayor Protem Tamaio. Uh, if I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamaio?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, that item carries. Uh, we'll move on to item number twenty-seven, that I believe uh, City Manager pulled.
Yes, Mayor, Council. I, I pulled this item i- in the spirit of transparency. Uh, wanted to, to acknowledge or recognize, we did receive a protest letter from one of the bidders for this item. The protest uh, was submitted after the agenda was posted, so typically we would include that uh, that letter as part of the, the staff report and attachments. We didn't receive it. We wanna ensure that we, we do include that as part of the record. Uh, the, the protest was centered whether or not uh, the, this, this company believes that the, our recommended vendors qualified or not. Uh, we, 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 we stand by our recommendation. We feel that this vendor um, meets the requirements of uh, the project, the, the bid, the, the scope of work, everything that we've requested. Um, but, and again, in the spirit of transparency, we do wanna recognize that we received a trans, uh, uh, protest letter, and we will be including that as part of the, the formal final record. But our recommendation stands as written for the items recommending Volter Engineering for this project.
Okay, uh, at this time, I'll see if any of my colleagues have any comments, questions in regards to this item. Okay, um, at this time, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first by uh, Councilmember Romero.
I second.
And we have a second by Councilmember Alonso. Uh, if I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamaio?
Aye.
Ma, Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Uh, that item carries. We will move on to, no, that concludes our consent calendar. So when we move on to AB twelve thirty-four travel reports, I'm actually just gonna go down the line, cause I think everybody did go to conference or somewhere, so. Uh, we'll start off with Councilmember Peralta.
Uh, yes, thank you so much. Um, would like to report on uh, the Montebello advocacy trip to Washington DC from July seventh through the ninth. Uh, this was a very uh, jam-packed two days um, that we had the opportunity to travel to represent the City of Montebello to advocate for our community's priorities at a federal level. Our goal was uh, twofold, to highlight Montebello's unique role in the region and to align with federal transportation and public safety priorities uh, to secure critical funding for our city. In terms of the transportation advocacy, we met with congressional offices, the US Department of Transportation, and uh, members of the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee uh, to discuss Montebello's transition to a zero-emission transit fleet, uh, specifically for our hydrogen uh, transition. We shared our plans for rolling out our new hydrogen full, uh, fuel cell buses and our application for the federal low, uh, no emission uh, uh, grant funding program. The specific uh, application that we uh, submitted was a request, I believe for sixteen million dollars in federal support to develop a hydrogen refueling system, uh, station, excuse me, uh, that will service our fleet, which connects our residents, I believe, across thirteen cities in the region. Um, at its peak, our transit system has served eight to ten million riders annually, making federal partnership extremely vital uh, in sustaining the services that we uh, continue to have here in the city. Uh, we also did advocate for our city's interest in the pending uh, Surface Transportation Reauthorization Act to ensure continued access to federal transportation resources as that legislation is currently in the process of being drafted and then approved. Um, we also highlighted Montebello's critical role as a regional uh, public safety player. Uh, specifically, we advocated for emergency communications infrastructure. So um, Montebello does operate and maintain the emergency radio system, which is used by multiple cities in our area. If that goes down, that would become a very critical um, situation in terms of nine-on, nine-one-one calls and public safety coordination. So we did emphasize the need for federal funding uh, to modernize and sustain this infrastructure. Uh, additionally, we also uh, advocated in terms of wildfire preparedness uh, with the new state fire zone designation impacting our community. Uh, we did advocate for funding to construct a new wildland fire station and strengthen our regional wildfire response ca, uh, capacity. In terms of the overall course of these two days, uh, we did meet with the US Department of Transportation, Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, and Federal Transportation Administration, the US House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, both the majority and minority committees, the US House Committee on Natural Resources, and then the offices of Representative uh, Robert Garcia, uh, Representative Linda Sanchez, Senators Adam Schiff, and Senator um, Alex Padilla. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. We'll move on down the line to Councilmember Alonso.
I have nothing to report.
That's your part, okay. Uh, Councilmember Romero.
Yes, thank you. Um, just to reiterate, yes, we did um, we had a, a very informative trip when we went to DC in July. We met with the uh, legislators and Department of Transportation to discuss and uh, secure grant support. And uh, we had a lot of positive conversations. Our um, transportation is the third-largest municipal bus system in Los Angeles County. Um, we currently have sixty-six uh, buses that we're serving in uh, thirteen communities. So we discussed prioritizing public safety, improving accessibility and infrastructure upgrades. Um, Montebello's introducing hydrogen-fueled electric buses, as well as hydrogen fueling station in support of our zero rollout plan. Uh, we also discussed um, the Montebello Fire Department, uh, that we are currently operating in three fire stations. And we are in the process of uh, obtaining four to six emergency responsi, uh, vehicles. We also um, highlighted our MCAP program. And our um, we discussed the OSS, the Operations Stay Safe Program, that it's a wraparound service um, for drug and alcohol abuse, case management, behavioral health, uh, workforce support, and housing navigation assistance. We discussed support for the um, fourth uh, wildfire fire station. And so it was just a, it was a great trip, and I feel that we uh, we definitely were great in communicating our needs, and I, and I feel that that will be met in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you for the report. Uh, we'll move on to Mayor Protem Tamaio.
Yes, um, I do have a report. I attended both the ICA and the Naleo conferences. Um, at the Naleo conference, there was one specific session, the emergency preparedness. So I'd like to share a brief report um, about that. The, the discussion brought together local leaders, emergency managers, and policy experts to share best practices for keeping our communities safe before and after disasters. One of the key takeaways was the importance of community-wide readiness, not just having an emergency plan on paper, but ensuring that our residents know what to do, that they have the resources that they need, and the trust, and trust that the systems are in place. The session also emphasized that preparedness is an ongoing process, requiring training, outreach, and coordination across multiple agencies. I'm proud to say that Montebello is already taking many of these proactive steps in this area. We conduct regularly emergency meetings. We have mutual aid agreements with neighboring cities, and our police and fire department continuously update response protocols. I know this because I attended an emergency management and emergency operations center session that was led by our Battalion Chief Salvador Flores. We also have programs like CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team Training that empowers residents to be part of the solution in, in um, in the, in the case of a crisis. I also recall early on, one of the public comments from a resident was that there was no information on the city website for emergency preparedness. I went on there today, and I can report that now our website contains information on emergency preparedness. So I wanted to thank the city's EOC teams, the staff, and the community partners for their commitment to readiness. Um, this Naleo com, uh, session reinforced, reinforced that while disasters may be unpredictable, our preparedness does not have to be. So Montebello is leading with action and collaboration and care for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you for uh, your report, Mayor Protem. Um, I as well, um, many of the conferences and uh, information has already been shared. I did attend as well the ICA and Naleo Conference. Noting that there's no council orals, um, at this time, we'll move on to uh, the final portion of our agenda. And uh, Councilmember Romero did uh, share um, uh, that she would like, you know, to close uh, this council meeting in the memory of Jerry Hernandez, and I will read a little bit about Jerry. Jerry was a beloved son, brother, grandson, cousin, nephew, and friend. He was a very talented musician, a Montebello High School alumnus, class of twenty-twenty-two, captain of the drum line. His talent allowed him to participate in the Pasadena Tournament, Tournament of Roses Honor Band. He was also a member of many tamborazo groups. He also served the City of Montebello Parks and Rec Department as part of the summer youth program. Jerry is remembered by his family and friends as the kindest, funniest person they knew. If we can please uh, hold a moment of silence for Jerry. Okay, we will be, uh, again, this uh, council meeting is closing in the memory of Jerry. Um, before we finalize, just wanna thank everybody who came to the council meeting, everybody that provided a public comment, and also for all those um, folks that are tuning in, and to our staff and the City Council. Meeting is adjourned.